Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Stoughton School Committee meeting, Tuesday, January 11, 2022. This is being recorded on SMAC for future viewing. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, excuse me. So looking at public comment, we didn't have any folks to sign up for public comments. Dr. Rab, I'm going to hand it to you to give your superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mrs. Gropey. Very short this evening. I wanted to report that we had a very successful vaccine clinic over at the Wilkins on Saturday. We had over 300 shots in arms, which was fantastic, and all levels, all ages, boosters, first shots, second shots. And they'll be back on the 29th to administer the second shot for those who need it and to allow for anything else. So we're really excited to be able to host that. I was pleasantly surprised at how crowded it was. I went by around 9:15 and the line was already back to the door. So that's a good thing. I think it was great to have it here in Stoughton and local and allow people to have that opportunity. So it was fantastic. And the only second thing that I wanted to mention is that, as you can imagine, we're watching the COVID numbers in the schools carefully, both among faculty and staff as well as students. And we're working very, very hard to maintain in-person learning because I think one of the things, a couple of people have asked me, you know, can you go remote like we did last year? And we can't. That's not an option that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education allows us this year. And I just wanted to be clear about that. It's, we're in school, we're in-person learning, and we're doing well, given the situation that we're in. Our faculty attendance numbers were a little bit better today, so we'll see. I'm taking it one day at a time, and we'll get through it. But I'm impressed by everybody's positive spirit and everybody's can-do attitude as we get through these two weeks with the virus. So that's really all I have for our superintendent update this evening.
That's awesome. Could I ask, with the vaccine clinic, I know that it at some point said it was full with appointments, but there were walk-ins welcome. And then when people had gotten there, the lines were long, and I think there was some frustration. It's important to differentiate that it's not a Stoughton Schools clinic. We asked the state to come in and do it, so it's really a state thing. So while we want to provide it, we hope people will get the opportunity to get in even on the 29th, but it's definitely not something, like from a school committee perspective, I can't help with that. And I'm sure Katie, you probably got some emails or texts.
If they want to come and do another one, let them. On a Saturday or something?
No.
Excuse me. But...
No, understood.
Yeah. So it's just, I just wanted to note that it's a state thing. It's really not a Stoughton Public School thing, but I think it's wonderful that we're bringing it in and getting the younger kids the ability to be able to get the shots if they'd like. Thank you very much for your update, Dr. Rab. Appreciate it. We have Morgan Grobe, the student representative, with the student rep update.
Thank you for having me. This past, before winter break, we had our Holiday Hallway event for the Student Council, which was very successful. There was a lot of kids in the high school with really big smiles on their faces with all the decorations we put up and activities we had in the caf. So we were very happy to see the success in that, and we are hoping to have that again in the future. And also upcoming on Monday, the 24th, we have our eighth grade orientation in the auditorium for incoming ninth graders. And that is it for us. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Can we just drop our eighth graders off to you, Morgan?
No. No way. You don't want to sign up for that. So that's the eighth grade orientation. And what will happen? Do you know, have an idea how you, when you did it a couple of years ago?
It is a lot of like, it's a nice presentation where they tell you what it's like going from middle school to high school. It's really helpful for incoming students because it helps take a lot of nerves off of them, especially going from a smaller school to another school with a lot more students. Getting to know things like how the day works and what types of classes you can take and the people you'll see was very helpful for me going in. And I hope that is helpful for the incoming ninth graders as well.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks for the update. So we're now going to move on to new business. And I am extremely happy to welcome Ms. Julie Miller, Principal of the Stoughton High School. Welcome this evening. And we have the Stoughton High School Program of Studies and I want to say NEASC, but N-E-A-S-C update.
You can call it NEASC. That's all everyone else for a first read.
Okay, good.
So thank you for having me. I always enjoy being here, specifically for the Program of Studies. And Morgan, that was a nice segue into my presentation because the SHS showcase is January 24th, like Morgan said, and that is the night when we sort of kick off our whole course selection process. So talking about the Program of Studies tonight is completely appropriate. We have made some changes. You have a copy of the draft in front of you, and I also provided you with a sort of that cheat sheet to kind of pull out the things that were changed, added, revised, or deleted. There were some small wording changes throughout the book, nothing of substantial. So those kinds of things weren't necessarily pulled into this cheat sheet. But we did add some new things and take some things out, and I'm really pleased to present this catalog to you this evening. One of the first changes is on page 12. We had to change a designation to High Honors grade scale. We were currently, or not currently, we were previously offering AP US History over two years as AP US History I and AP US History II. However, the College Board informed us that we were not allowed to use the AP designation on the US I course since students didn't sit for the exam in US I. They didn't sit for the exam until US II. So we had to make that change, but we wanted to still encourage kids and still give students the credit that they deserve for taking that pre-AP course in their sophomore year, as they do also have the honors level to take or the college choice as well. And so in order to sort of differentiate between taking an honors US I and that sort of pre-AP US I, we used the scale that was already existent in our system that we hadn't been using for several years and just renamed it as High Honors, HH, which is, falls in between that honors and AP scale. So the students that are taking that pre-AP course get just a little bit more because it is a much more challenging, rigorous course that is preparing them for that Advanced Placement course in the next following year. So we added the actual designation to the course catalog with a description for those who need to see what that HH means. Then we have also added to our marketing, our Business and Technology section, on page 18, we added two new courses. With the new building, we've really had the opportunity to expand with the school store. And of course, in the past two years, we haven't really been able to use the building in the full way we would have desired. But now that we're in there for the third year and hope to have a normal school year, as normal as can be, we are really starting to use that school store much more regularly and have been opening it before-school and after-school hours, and kids are really starting to use that. And we want to be able to use that school store for an opportunity for a real-world learning experience for our kids, and the Business Program is the perfect opportunity for that. So as part of that, adding a course, Marketing School-Based Enterprise, and then also an Independent Study School Store course that allows the students to then take the things that they're learning in their coursework and apply it to an actual small business within our school building. So adding those two options to our students. And I do just also want to make note that any of the new courses, they do not have course numbers next to them yet because this is just a draft, and before creating those courses, we didn't want to create the courses without having approval first. So those will get, that'll all get settled out before we actually pass this out to students. On page 24, we've made some changes to our Journalism electives. We've been running Journalism as a course now for many years, and our students tend to love it, and they enjoy it, and they take it multiple years in a row. Our seniors are allowed to take Journalism as part of their English coursework in their senior if they choose to. The teacher that's been teaching Journalism has been teaching it now for a few years and would like to bring back the school newspaper, which hasn't been up and running for a really long time. And then so in doing that, taking the old Journalism class and making it Journalism I, and then adding to our book Journalism II class, which would then really be tied to that school newspaper. So any student could take Journalism I, grades nine through 12. Journalism II would be grades 10 through 12 and would really be tied to producing work for the school newspaper. Page 27, we just made a course change from Intensive Reading to Reading Comprehension. The term Intensive Reading tended to be confusing to some of our students and parents, not understanding whether that class was more difficult or challenging, and so we just changed the course name to help alleviate some of those misunderstandings. As always, John Manj, Director of Fine Arts, is always looking at the fine arts programming, either performing musical, performing visual or drama, and really honing in and developing that program according to his vision, and he has a wonderful vision as always. And then he takes into consideration our staffing, as we've changed, we've added some new staff this year, particularly in the drama, and he uses their skills and their really areas of expertise to help develop the Program of Studies. So in so doing, he is proposing that we eliminate Drawing and Painting III. In its place, taking that Drawing and Painting III course, which is pretty broad and pretty diverse, and really honing into the specifics, an Advanced Painting class, an Advanced Drawing class, and an Advanced Mixed Media course. What that does is it allows students to really delve into the particular area they're interested in. They can take all three courses if they'd like to, but it also really utilizes the talents of our staff because we brought onto our staff this year someone who's really very extremely talented in illustration and drawing. And so we can really pull those two pieces apart between painting and drawing and really use the skills of the staff that we have. Also, we brought Mr. Halick onboard in Drama, and this is the first time in my time of being a principal at high school that we've actually had a drama teacher on staff, which is wonderful. It was the desire, as we started to build that new building, to have that program added, and it's wonderful to see that we have it. As such, he took a good look at our Program of Studies and thought about what a real drama program should have as part of it. And so he has proposed that we remove the Advanced Theater Arts course and instead put in place some more technical theater classes, an elective called Theater for Social Change and also Theater Production Lab. And those three courses would allow them to expand the drama program beyond just the intro to theater arts, but then also get into technical theater, which is like props and costumes and makeup and scenery. Theater for Social Change, which allows, it's sort of like a civics in theater course. It allows students to really use their voices through theater. And then Production Lab would actually allow students to sort of develop and actually put on some performances within the school year besides just our drama programs and performances that we put on as the major productions. So he really has rounded that program out, and it's exciting to think about what our kids have the opportunity to take. In history, history is one of those subjects. It just never stops. It continues to get broader and broader and more content that needs to be covered and talked about with our kids. We were offering America Since 1980 as sort of this US III in the past couple of years, but as time continues to move on and different things need to be shifted, we are eliminating America Since 1980 and instead actually moving to a United States History III course. It is still a semester course like America Since 1980. It'll cover just a little bit more than what 1980 was covering, and it will still be required, but it will replace the requirement of America Since 1980. We will still have national and global perspectives as a course for students to take because students were also able to take that instead of America Since 1980, but now that instead that will just be an elective option for kids. So just simply making a switch of what is required. A few years ago, in the math department, we added an Exploring Computer Science course. Since we've been running that for a few years now, our students are prepared to be able to add to our coursework an AP Computer Science Principles course. We already offer AP Computer Science A. We are now adding an additional Computer Science Advanced class called Advanced Placement Computer Science Principles. The nice thing about these computer science courses is they are really accessible to all students, and you don't need a tremendous amount of mathematics behind you to be able to take these Advanced Placement courses. So the Advanced Placement Computer Science Principles class that we're actually offering, students would only have had to have completed an Algebra I course in order to be able to take in it, which means that potentially ninth graders could take that Advanced Placement Computer class, and it would be the first Advanced Placement class available to ninth graders for next year. So students would be able to take both of the computer science courses. You can take each of them because they are totally different areas of the computer science world. And again, we're just adding to the opportunities for our students. Science is thinking about doing something really kind of creative and neat next year. We're going to pilot something. So we currently offer Forensic Science, Ethics and Technology, Oceanography, Robotics I, and Biotechnology. We offer those courses at the college level. What our science department would like to try to pilot next year is differentiating those courses so that we can offer them at the honors level as well, but the courses will run simultaneously together. So honors and college students will be within the same course, but it will be differentiated so that students can learn from each other of all levels. So college and honors students will be able to learn from each other and work with each other, but it also allows us to be able to offer the honors level to some of our students who would like that additional rigor, that additional challenge, perhaps like the honors credit rather than just the college credit. So it really affords us a lot of different opportunities for our kids, who we're going to try to pilot that next year and see how that works. It might give us a lot more opportunity. We don't have the staffing to be able to run an honors and a college-level separate courses. So this is an opportunity to be able to do both and for our students to learn from each other at different levels. They are suggesting a new course called Food Science. This would be a new lab science that students would be able to take in science. It is a semester course. It is not simply about nutrition. It's actually about the biochemistry and micro, biology? Is that the right word? Of food science and everything that it encompasses. So that might be very interesting for some of our students who are interested in that area of science. We've been offering in world language now, American Sign Language I and American Sign Language II for a few years. It's a hugely popular course. We have always desired to expand beyond that, and so next year we're hoping to run Advanced ASL Conversation, which would be similar to an ASL III, but just a different kind of title instead of calling it ASL III. And that allows our students that have been taking it for two years now to take it for a third year if they would like to. Past two years, we've been running Portuguese as a pilot, and that has also been hugely successful, and we would like to continue to expand that program and grow that program. Our students are really enjoying it. It has been a popular choice for some of our students, and so we would like to expand to the Portuguese II honors level and also add Portuguese III as a next option, since we've been running it for two years now. So those are the courses that we are suggesting, the revisions that we've made to the Program of Studies. Like always, you know, we have over 150 courses for our kids to take, really a wide variety and lots of different opportunities, and we really encourage our kids to expand and take the opportunity that they have in high school to try all kinds of things. It's their last opportunity really to have a free education, and the amount of things that we offer, it's a great opportunity. So. Any questions?
I really love the cheat sheet. Focus is right in on everything, but I just, it never ceases to amaze me and impress me with the courses that we can offer and that we still offer and that we add on to. It's just great.
Thank you.
I'm just excited for your, the drama teacher and the ASL. I'm so impressed that you're getting, I know that we had troubles a few years ago with having ASL II, and so I'm excited. That's very impressed, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. I'm happy to see with the School-Based Enterprise, like the school store and all that and having the students more engaged, that brings it similar to like what they're doing at the regional, not so much. It's not a co-op, it's none of that, but I like that we're bringing a little bit of that flavor to the table so that the kids are actually experiencing some of the hands-on experiences. So that's great because when I went to regional, I worked at the store. So that's pretty cool. I like that, but also I think, like she had mentioned the ASL, I like that we're kind of expanding. Before it was like, we can't get anybody to do the classes. Now it's you're expanding on these classes and the students want it. There's a thirst for it. And seeing the Portuguese, which we invested in when you presented, what, three years ago to start, right? Two years ago? To see that you're now adding to it makes me extremely happy because this was something that we've talked about in the past, and it was, well, we had it before, but there wasn't that, you know? People didn't want it, so we dropped it, and I think this is a community that it's big in, so that's wonderful. So I'm happy to see that. And I'm still hoping that at the middle school, we can start it there so that you can start to see more of that influx of students. Because although I speak fluently, my young ins don't, and they speak Spanish as they look over there. Anyway, this is great. It's impressive every time, so thank you.
I appreciate you hearing what the wants are and you're actually moving it forward. I love it. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. A pleasure. You want to change gears a little bit? It's NEASC?
Yeah.
So a few weeks ago, many families and students received an email from me about NEASC, and I know that's, that did cause some questions among the community about what NEASC is. So I'm glad to be here tonight to kind of share with you what that whole thing is all about. So it is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges is what NEASC stands for. It's an accrediting nonprofit organization that, you know, partners with over 1,500 schools and universities across the US. Stoughton is accredited by NEASC, and we have been for many, many years. Many years ago, not many years ago, but back in 2011, when we had our last decennial visit, that was the process that actually started us on the road of getting a new high school because at that time we were put on mourning for our facilities through the NEASC accreditation process. Well, it's been time. It's actually been over 10 years. We were supposed to have our visit in 2021, but due to a couple of different things, us moving into a new building in that approximate time, and then COVID pushed NEASC back, so our decennial visit actually isn't until 2024. But in preparation for that visit, where they come in and they take a look at everything that we do and our best practices and try to help us improve ourselves, we have to work on a self-reflection process which takes place this year. And as part of that self-reflection process, we put out a survey to our families, our students, and our staff, and that gives us an opportunity to hear all the voices of all our contributing members about the things that we do well, how they feel about the things that we do now, and what they would like to see us do better or work on in the future. We just gave that survey not too long ago. We just got the survey results back. We're trying to go through those results now. They were anonymous. We only see what the answers are, and we're taking those, that information to help us along with collection of evidence, student work, and some of the documents throughout the district to help us assess according to five standards, which are learning culture, student learning, professional practices, learning support, and learning resources. We write this report. There's a collaborative two-day conference in May of this year where a small NEASC team will come out and meet with our steering committee at the high school. They may want to meet with the school committee. They may speak to some students, some parents. It's a smaller version. They basically take a look at our self-reflection report. They talk to us about what we're thinking we need to focus on in the next two years between now and the decennial visit in 2024. We establish a sort of a working action plan of how we will tackle the things we think we need to work on better. And then they leave. We work on those things for the next two years, and they come back in 2024 to see how we've done. And so when they come in this May of 2022, they won't be asked, they won't be actually looking to accredit us because that won't happen in 2024. This is just to start us on that process. So you'll be hearing about that. You might see some things later that might ask some questions of you or seek some information or whatnot, and so that's what it's all about. It's all about making sure that we're doing the very best that we can for our community here and making the high school as competitive and aligned with the important research-based practices that we know work so well. So that's NEASC.
Wow. That's a lot.
It is.
Wow. Just a lot of work on your part and your team's part to prepare. What is it? I can't see. The Program of Studies, we have to. Right, yeah. So you're good with that? So thank you for the presentation.
You're very welcome.
Of the two items. So what we'll now be able to do is we'll need to vote on the approval of the Program of Studies. Sorry, I hurt my neck, I feel like. Usually I always look at Katie quickly.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Stoughton High School Program of Studies 22, 23?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you for all the work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming on this warm day today.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Can I ask one question about the program? Last year, we approved the, a new course. It was African-American history.
Black American history.
Black American history, thank you. And how was that enrollment? Like, how was that?
Enrollment's really well. It's booked solid this school year. Students are really reporting that they are enjoying the material and the things that they're learning about. Ms. and Gray was actually teaching it this school year, and she's really done a really nice job in providing students with choice of how they tackle the material and what kinds of projects they complete, and they've really put together some really nice work. So it's working very well. We're very excited about it, and I see it moving forward in the future with pretty high enrollment.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Okay.
Good night.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Yeah, have a good night. Drive safe. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The school calendar draft.
Ugh.
We get, so we get a draft.
It's terrible.
Every year of the school calendar, and this is just for us to see the draft that you put together. And that's really it. We don't vote on it or anything until the next meeting. I can feel you looking at me, but I can't turn my neck.
Katie doesn't like either of them.
Oh, is that what it is? It's just...
No, no, no. I only like A.
She always only likes A. So what we traditionally do is we get the drafts, and then, she's being very sassy this evening. I don't know what happened. And we send both drafts to the unions just as a courtesy so that they can see it and provide some feedback as well, what their thoughts are. So we'll do that post this meeting, but this is the meeting to share with you guys the two drafts. Is there anything you wanted to add, Dr. Rab?
No, no, that's the...
Katie, do you want to pick that up? No, just kidding.
Can you have that for me?
No. Okay. Okay, so that would be that piece. There's really not much to talk about other than we do have the drafts. They're in the, they'll be in the minutes for when those are posted, so folks can see that. More to come with that.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. And those you draft by looking at surrounding communities, all of the information that other districts are doing so that, we have a lot of teaching staff that live out of district around and surrounding communities, so we try to align that to ensure that you have teaching and staff in general that are in the buildings being able to support it.
Absolutely.
Okay. So the waiver of fees request from the Stoughton Youth Lacrosse. Katie, since you like to throw paper, would you like to read that?
No. The Stoughton Youth Lacrosse is nonprofit organization benefiting the youth of Stoughton in grade K through 8. Lacrosse game in New England are generally played on turf fields, so having the opportunity is not only practice, but to host games in...
Veterans. Yeah, the Veterans Memorial Stadium.
Veterans Memorial Stadium. Sorry, I'm like, I have something stuck in my throat.
Well, you did have a cold last week. I probably shouldn't have asked you to speak.
...enable us to offer what surrounding communities have been doing for years. We are so excited for the youth of Stoughton. To make our lacrosse program accessible to everyone, the Stoughton Youth Lacrosse Program strives to keep registration fees affordable for everyone in our community.
Okay. So they're looking for a waiver of, you're never throwing anything at me again.
Yeah, so we are. We would like to kindly request a waiver of the usage fees for Veterans Memorial Stadium for the Stoughton Youth Lacrosse Program of Studies Sundays between March 1st and June 30th. They do understand that we will be responsible for the associated cost of custodian. I can't never say that.
I know. It's a tongue twister.
Services required. We have already submitted the use of facilities form, insecureed the facilities for these dates.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Please let us know if you need any additional information or if you have any questions.
Okay.
And I, Mike?
I don't know.
How do you say the word? Tupeen? Tupeen? And Keith, I don't know how to say that last name either.
She's so fresh. She's a sassy one.
But I'll make a motion to approve the waiver, oh no, what am I saying? The waiver fees for the Veterans turf field.
For the Stoughton Youth Lacrosse Program.
For March to June.
Correct. Second.
30th. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, we have that. Then the next item on the
Can't wait.
You're excited, huh?
I love that. I had so much fun last year.
Yeah. It was surprising to see how many girls got involved in the new program, but just to see the program growing in the town in general is amazing, because that starts at the town level, and then it works its way into the school, at the high school. And that's what it's all about, is building these programs, you know, recreationally, so that we can give the kids the opportunity to get to high school and be able to play with other teams within the hock-a-mock and actually win some games and start to, you know.
I think we did really good last year.
We did amazing. I'm very proud of these students. Okay, so for all business, we have the FY 23 budget and articles.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Groppi. At this time, I'm not recommending any changes to the budget that we voted back in December. The December budget is robust and strong and will set us up well for fiscal '23. So there's no action needed this evening.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so under other, we have the acceptance of minutes for the November 30th, 2021, and December 14th, 2021, public meetings. We can start with November 30th?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Need a water, huh?
2021, sorry.
Do you need a water?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion to approve December 14th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I feel like, what is it? Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Captain. Aye, aye, aye. That's funny. Okay, and then the other piece we have is correspondence that would fall under other. So all stock. Does anybody have any correspondence they received to bring forward?
I do not.
No, but I do want to put out, shout out, I just want to, the, Ms. Susan McDonald at the O'Donnell Middle School?
Yeah.
Just want to say thank you so much for answering all my emails last week. She was such a help. I mean, she probably had our hands full, and she was very helpful. So I just wanted to say thank you. Because I'm sure I'm not the only one, even though I'd like to think so.
Okay, so for correspondence, I just received, can I just check? Because I get so many. Hold on. Let me see. Sorry, there were. So I have the correspondence from Dr. Rab that we received welcoming the new business manager, Christine Sakao. So I think that, we just want to acknowledge that correspondence and welcome her to the district. She officially started yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yeah, so welcome Christine to that. We received a correspondence, a press release from Desi, that the masks requirements were extended to February 28th, 2022. I get like a release, press release, that, and we see that from you as well. Sorry, guys. I'm sorry. Also, we received a correspondence regarding the freezing temperatures at the schools and yesterday, or today, and going to schools from you that you sent out to families. And I want to thank you for sending that out and being on top of that, working with the principals to get that communication out. And thank you for opening the schools and making sure that the doors were open early so that no student was outside. And then received another correspondence. Sorry, guys, I'm trying to keep up with all this. From, I believe yourself, yes, from you, Dr. Rab, regarding a special town election that is set for February 1st. I don't, you weren't aware, usually we get to use the facilities form, looking to get permits to use the buildings. And this was an off day because it was a special election and schools in session. And with COVID, we have different restrictions with things when students are in session, because we are just, we have social distancing guidelines we have to adhere to. So we, there was correspondence and discussions today with some select board members, the town manager, trying to work things out and being, you know, trying to assist in any way, but knowing that, we're just realizing that there's the February 1st election. We have schools and students in buildings that are five days a week, full capacity. We don't have rooms. Some classrooms are at two feet. Not the whole classroom, but some students, more particularly the South School. Because the South School is such an old building, in the way it's built, when elections happen regularly and schools in session, students go, they walk to the CAF, they get their lunches, and then they walk back to the classrooms and they eat their lunches, which we've been able to accommodate in normal circumstances. But unfortunately, COVID is an abnormal circumstance. So we're unable to let students eat lunch at their tables. We could have last year, because it was a hybrid, and that kids were six feet or more, way more than six feet apart. So they were able to do that. But we raised a concern today that the South wouldn't be able to accommodate that, because we would be under that three foot with no masks on and having lunch. And that falls outside of the guidelines that we're supposed to adhere to. So we brought that to their attention and saying, we need to figure something out, because the South will not be able to, that's why we need a new building. But the South is just not able to accommodate that. So we're trying to work through that and figure it out. So that, I wanted you guys to be aware, I flipped you guys, like, just to keep you informed, there were discussions. And obviously, we're just trying to do what's right for the children and the staff in the buildings. Everything is just as important for the older folks that are in the buildings, all the teachers, all the administrative workers, cafeteria workers, maintenance. It's just really important at this time with how things have been kind of spreading that we don't break any of the guidelines for lunches.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you want to add anything?
Is, yeah, I saw your email, which I didn't even know that February 1st was a special election. So that, you know, should be out there so that people know. But also, I know that South is small, but Hanson, is that going to be a problem for that? Because I know that that's a small school, and I'm thinking Wilkins might have issues.
I spoke to the principals in all of the elementary schools today. And we talked about, in the other four elementary schools, they use the gymnasiums. And so they can move the gym classes either into a classroom or weather permitting outside, not likely on February 1st, but they can move the gym class to another space and still use the gym for elections. The particular issue at the South was that they use the cafeteria. And then that's the problem, because the students can't eat in their classrooms with COVID restrictions. And so we had to restrict access to the South for elections. But I spoke to all the other principals to be sure that we could make things work for February 1st. You know, and it's just trying to figure it out, that's all. And I don't live in town, so I don't always see, you know, some of the announcements.
I live in town, and I didn't know. Too bad they couldn't hold it off till February vacation, when the kids weren't in the schools.
In the building, right.
Then we wouldn't have to worry about people coming in and out. And they're going to, everyone's going to have to wear a mask into the building.
Absolutely. The expectation of the masks and social distancing for the election.
Wow, it's very hard to move around. I'm sorry.
You're having fun spinning in your chair.
Sorry. Yeah, thank goodness these move. Yeah, so I just wanted to share that we have that correspondence, and we're trying to just figure things out. Dr. Grimm did ask to meet tomorrow morning, I guess, to talk, so I said I would. And they're just trying to figure things out and make it happen and do what it is to make this as seamless as possible. What we're going to do is come back and be more explicit in our use of facilities policy at the next meeting and vote on it at that meeting to be very explicit on what's required to get a permit.
I thought we did last year.
We did, but we're going to be clearer.
Okay.
And we're going to just be very clear in relation to any kind of town line, town events that are bigger, so that if you're booking every single school, we want, we'll just put it, we're going to put it a bit clearer. So that way, it's just a clear expectation, and we just help people navigate a little easier on the process. I think that's it. I all, that's all I had for correspondence. I'm sure I missed something. And I did get correspondence from some parents, but it was more asking about before the snow day.
Okay.
Which, thank you for the communication on that as well, in advance was nice. But they did ask, I was glad that when you put out the communication, you did state it was, we were using the third of the five snow days that are built in, because I don't think people realize we had two days already that we used for no power. So we have five days built into the calendar, so we've now used up three, and we're in the third week of June.
January.
No, June, going, getting out.
Oh, to get out, yeah.
Yeah, to get out. So it just keeps kind of moving. So we appreciate the communication and that you're kind of at least keeping everybody informed of what's going on. Guess what time it is?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wonderful. Okay. All right, so I am going to ask for, who's in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye as well. We will see everybody at the next meeting, February 8th, 2022. We hope you all stay warm and have a wonderful evening. Thank you.